I can have roll, please.
Councilmember Brightigam.
Here.
Councilmember Nguyen.
Yeah.
Councilmember Tran.
Here.
Councilmember Munyaton.
Here.
Councilmember Aristegi.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Dovin.
Present.
And Mayor Klavenstein.
Here. We're going to now rise for the invocation and pledge of allegiance. Our Assistant City Manager Matt West will lead us in the invocation. And if I could have Mayor Pro Tem Joe Dovin lead us in the pledge, please.
Please prepare yourself according to your faith. Dear Lord, as we come together this evening, let us pause to reflect on the responsibility we carry as leaders and stewards of our community. May our conversations be guided by wisdom, empathy, and a deep commitment to the common good. We seek the strength and clarity to make decisions that uphold the values of justice, equity, and compassion for all. We ask this in your name. Amen.
Please face the symbol of our nation and our greatest freedom in the world. Kind of we heart. A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And the republic which extends, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Please take your seat.
All right, we have some presentations this evening. First up, we have a community spotlight and recognition of the Doig Action Committee for their valued collaboration in the Doig Intermediate School Mural Project. And I believe our Assistant City Manager Matt West will read the spotlight this evening.
All right. The Garden Grove City Council is proud to recognize a group of talented students and community partners for their inspiring collaboration in the Doig Intermediate School Mural Project, a vibrant public art piece that tells the story of growth, education, and the power of student voice. At this time, I'd like to invite all of the students to come up to the front here. Stand up front there. Thank you. This mural, now located across the street from Santiago High School along Trask Avenue, was created in collaboration with the City of Garden Grove, the Garden Grove Unified School Districts, students from Doig Intermediate, their teacher, teacher Schweta Singh Luth, and muralist Michaela Taylor, and was made possible through generous funding by the Affordable Housing AHA Mr. Sean Void. The mural beautifully depicts the journey of a young student growing and progressing through the Garden Grove Unified School District, starting at Clinton Elementary, continuing through Doig Intermediate, and culminating in graduation from Santiago High School, showing that when young people are given the opportunity to lead, they rise with creativity and purpose. The mural is more than just art. It's a symbol of our city's commitment to youth and enriching our neighborhoods with meaningful works. It has already been embraced by the community and stands as a reminder of the bright futures being built in Garden Grove classrooms every day. At this time, the mayor and the city council would like to recognize the following students for their outstanding contributions. And I apologize in advance if I misstate any names here. Abdiel Garcia, Giovanna Miller, Catherine Garcia, Joanna Carabirin, Javier Chavez, Eduardo Mario, Kayden Zavala, Dylan Flores, Jacob Cervantes, Leonardo Aguilar, Jonathan Zoto, Joanna Borrioz, Guadalupe Castro, Melody Sundejas, Victoria Contreras, Benjamin Hernandez, Anastasia Hera Braun, Eileen Iroheta, Rebecca Silva, and Lucia Rodriguez. Congratulations once again to all involved in the Doig Intermediate School Mural Project, and thank you for enriching our community. At this time, we'd like to welcome up G.G. USD Board of Education President Lon Nguyen and Trustee Walter Munyaton to the podium to share a few words. Following that, we'd like to have you pose with the council for a photo. You could just make way for the podium right there. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and City Councilmember. With me is our trustee Walter Munyaton. The familiar name to you. As a Garden Grove Unified School District Board of Education President, it is very privileged to be here this evening to celebrate the collaboration between the city and a scholar from Doig Intermediate School. I'm particularly proud to see how the partnership between our school district and the city has shown students firsthand the impact they can have on their community, even in intermediate school. We understand that these motivated students first reached out to the city with their ideas in April 2023. And after multiple meetings with the city manager and the city council, the wonderful mural is now complete and serves as a representation of how our students progress one step at a time on their journey through a lifelong success. We thank Doig Intermediate Teachers, Ms. Lu for showing her students how to advocate, how to work with the city, and how to make positive impact on their community. Finally, thank you to the city council for recognizing the significance of student involvement in a project like this and their unwavering support in making this mural a reality. We know that this collaboration will inspire students to take more steps on a path to civic engagement and to become leaders in the community, in high school, and beyond. And thank you very much. I'd like to introduce my fellow board member, trustee Walter Munyaton.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, City Council Members. It's an honor to be here today on behalf of the Garden Grove Unified School District, along with my colleague, the president and trustee, President Nguyen, to recognize Doig Intermediate School and the Student Action Club. As a former Doig Intermediate School student who now serves on the Board of Education representing the very community of Doig Intermediate and standing in front of two also Doig Spartan alums and Santiago alums, it's totally awesome to be here in community. As you know, this group of motivated students behind us used their voice to urge the council to approve a new mural near their school, led by their wonderful teacher, Ms. Singh Luth. These students were able to transform an idea into reality. We commend Ms. Singh Luth for showing her students how education, creativity, and civic engagement go hand in hand in shaping a much vibrant community. This mural is not only beautifying the Garden Grove community, but also empowering students to become more active participants in the community and the political process. We, when we see students engaged in civics, they gain a sense of ownership and pride into their community that they otherwise may not have received. They learn that their voices matter and that they create meaningful change and leave their mark on the community. Also, kudos to the talented artists who did an outstanding job bringing the students' vision to life, showcasing that G.G. USD equips all students from preschool to high school with the academic and personal skills they need to reach lifelong success, which is our motto. I want to extend my sincerest thanks to the city council and the mayor for recognizing the importance of student involvement and development in the mural and approving this project. And lastly, I'll end with the partnership between the city council, our school district, and the students at Doig Intermediate exemplifies what can be achieved when we work together for the betterment of the community. Thank you.
You share with me. I like my sun. My shade. It's too bright. Where were you last week? Let's go.
We got a big crowd, so we might as well.
Thanks for doing guys.
Thank you for taking picture with us earlier.
Is this one of yours? Okay.
Thank you.
Do you want me to go back up here? Or do you want me to just come to these?
I think we can come to these.
Okay, and then go back. Go back up to housing. You got it. Thank you. Thank you. Sorry about that. All right, we're just gonna wait a second. If everybody that cares too, if you want to clear out. Thank you all so much. It's wonderful to see so many families here this evening to support your children and all their efforts for the community. It's beautiful. All right. We have a couple other items that we're going to sort of pull out of order. It'd be items number three and four. They're proclamations that are on the consent calendar. Can I get a motion in a second, please? I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Yep.
Okay. Motion in a second. Please call for the vote.
Motion received. Seven yes votes.
Wonderful. The first is an adoption of a proclamation recognizing Black April Memorial Month. And I was wondering if we could ask our Mayor Pro Tem, Joe Dovin, to read that proclamation this evening.
It's with great honor and privilege to recite the proclamation. April is Black April Memorial Month. It's also with a heavy heart. A very dark month for us as Vietnamese Americans who came as refugees. Whereas April 30, 2025 marks the 50th anniversary of the fall of Saigon on April 30, 1975, to communism. And whereas for many Vietnam and Vietnam-area veterans who were directly involved in the war and Vietnamese-Americans who have settled in the United States, the Vietnam War was a tragedy full of great suffering and the loss of American, Vietnamese, and Southeast Asian lives. And whereas 58,169 Americans were killed and 304,000 were wounded out of the 2.59 million people who served in the Vietnam War. One out of every 10 Americans who served in Vietnam became a casualty of war. And whereas the Vietnam War resulted in the deaths of 250,000 South Vietnamese soldiers and 2 million Vietnamese citizens. And whereas after the fall of Saigon, over 135,000 Vietnamese people and their families fled to the United States, including former military personnel, government officials, and those who had worked for the United States during the war. And whereas hundreds of thousands of people took boats in order to leave Vietnam in the late 1970s to mid 1990s, the successful immigrants reached refugee camps in Thailand, Malaysia, Indonesia, the Philippines, and Hong Kong, while approximately one half of the people fleeing Vietnam perished at sea. And whereas human rights, religious freedom, democracy, and protection against threats of aggression are important concerns of Vietnamese-Americans. And whereas we must teach our children and future generations important lessons from the Vietnam War, including how the plight of the Vietnamese refugees following the end of the war serves as a powerful example of the values of freedom and democracy. And whereas we should actively rededicate ourselves to the principles of human rights, individual freedom, sovereignty, and equal protection under the laws of a just and democratic world, we should set aside moments of time every year on April 30 to give remembrance to the soldiers, medical personnel, and civilians who died during the Vietnam War in pursuit of freedom. And whereas Vietnamese-American communities throughout California will commemorate April 30, 2025 as Black April, a day of remembrance and rededication to the principles of freedom, including freedom of expression, freedom of press, and internet freedom. Now, therefore, the Garden Grove City Council does hereby proclaim the month of April 2025 as Black April Memorial Month in Garden Grove in recognition of the great tragedy, suffering, and lives lost during the Vietnam War and to hope for more justice and liberty for the people of Vietnam. March 25, 2025, please observe a moment of silence with me. Thank you, Mayor, council.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. Number four, item number four that we just passed was an adoption of a proclamation celebrating April as Arab-American Heritage Month. And our Assistant City Manager Matt West will be reading the proclamation.
Thank you, Mayor. There are also representatives of the Arab-American Civic Council here as well, too, to receive this proclamation. Whereas for over a century, Arab-Americans have been making valuable contributions to American society through art, medicine, law, business, technology, government, architecture, literature, and culture. And whereas since migrating to the United States, men and women of Arab descent have shared their rich culture and traditions with neighbors and friends while also setting fine examples of model citizens and public servants. Just a moment. All right, I'm gonna continue if that's okay. Whereas, Arab-Americans have also enriched our society by embracing the American spirit of opportunity that makes our nation free and prosperous. And whereas issues currently affecting Arab-Americans such as civil rights abuses, harmful stereotyping, harassment, and bullying can be combated by education and awareness. And whereas, Arab-Americans join all Americans in the desire to see a peaceful and diverse society where every individual is treated equally and feels safe. And whereas, the contributions and heritage of Arab-Americans have helped build a better nation. Now, therefore, the Garden Grove City Council does hereby proclaim the month of April 2025 as Arab-American Heritage Month in Garden Grove to celebrate the countless contributions that Arab-Americans have made to American society in the city of Garden Grove, March 25, 2025. I'd like to invite up the representatives.
Good evening. Am I being heard well or not? Because I can't hear myself well. All right. Good evening, City Council and Mayor. Thank you for having us here on behalf of the Arab-American Civic Council and the Arab-American communities here in Garden Grove. I would like to extend my heartfelt thanks to you and everyone who worked on this. And I would like to extend my heartfelt thanks to Mayor Klavenstein. And I do apologize in advance if I mispronounce any names. And I see members of the city council, Munyaton, Tran, Aristegui, then, Britagram III, and Nguyen. Thank you for this proclamation and recognizing April as Arab-American Heritage Month, a month to celebrate the continuous contributions that Arab-Americans have made in our cities, states, and country. Would like to invite everyone and anyone of you to learn about us in this month, to visit us, to visit Little Arabia and Anaheim. Little Arabia is now a district in Anaheim. We use Little Saigon, which you have here in Garden Grove, as a statement or as an example to have what we have there. To see our culture and learn about your neighbors who have been here for the past 50-plus years. Your support strengthens our commitment to celebrate our rich culture, history, and traditions, and encourages greater understanding and unity within our diverse community. We are deeply grateful for your leadership and fostering an environment that honors all communities. Thank you again for this honor and for your continued support and unifying us again. Thank you so much.
Thank you. I appreciate our lovely city clerk's patience with me as I took everything completely out of order this evening. So, thank you. Before we move on to oral communication, we need to convene the housing authority. So, I will turn that over to Chair of the Housing Authority, Councilmember Brightigam.
Clerk, can you call roll?
Commissioner Aristegi.
Here.
Commissioner Klavenstein.
Here.
Commissioner Munyaton.
Here.
Commissioner Philip Nguyen.
Yeah.
Commissioner Tan Nguyen. Commissioner Tran.
Here.
Vice Chair Dovin.
Present.
Chair Brightigam. And Commissioner Beckles is absent.
I will entertain a motion for the consent items, consent calendar.
Chair Brightigam, if we could just open up for oral communications first.
That might help.
Thank you.
Do we have any members of the public wishing to speak on housing authority items? Okay, seeing none, we will close the public hearing and move on to consent. Entertain a motion?
Second.
Oh, you're the motion then.
Oh, I'm the second. All right.
All right.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Call for the vote. Roll call vote.
Commissioner Aristegi.
Yes.
Commissioner Klavenstein.
Yes.
Commissioner Munyaton.
Yes.
Commissioner Philip Nguyen.
Yes.
Commissioner Tan Nguyen.
Yes.
Commissioner Tran.
Yes.
Vice Chair Dovin.
Aye.
Chair Brightigam. Motion received. Eight yes votes.
On to item number three. We have a staff presentation.
Yes, this evening, we have a public hearing, adoption of a Garden Grove Housing Authority five-year plan and annual plan for fiscal years 2025 through 2029. And Division Manager Tiana is here to provide that report.
Good evening, Chairman and Commissioner. The item before you tonight is the Garden Grove Housing Authority's Public Housing Agency PHA Plan. The PHA Plan is a comprehensive guide to the Housing Authority's policy, program, and operation and strategy for meeting local housing needs and goals. Garden Grove Housing is required to submit this plan to HUD prior to April 17. In 2024, Garden Grove Housing received a CMAP score of 100%. CMAP, which is Section 8 Management Assessment Program, is a combination of self-audit and data submission to HUD that measure the performance of a housing authority. A score of 100% qualifies as a high-performing agency. And as the high-performing agency, we are only required to complete a streamlined format of the plan, this year consisting of the five-year and annual PHA Plan. Every year, PHA must hold a public hearing regarding any changes to the goals, objectives, policy of the agency, and invite public comments regarding such changes. We must consult with and consider the recommendation of the resident advisory board at the public hearing. Our resident advisory board comprised of six participants of the Section 8 Housing Program. They have reviewed the plan, and their comments are attached in the attachment A. The public hearing has been properly noticed on January 22 and January 24. The following are the highlights of the Housing Authority's accomplishment in fiscal year 2020 to 2024. Garden Grove Housing was rated as a high-performing agency over the past five years and utilized 100% of its funding from HUD to administer a housing program and assist families with rental assistance. Single housing audit was conducted annually. We received reviews concluding with no findings. Garden Grove Housing is required to report on all clients receiving housing subsidy on a regular basis via our HUD secure system. PHA must meet a 98% reporting threshold in order to receive. PHA must meet a 98% reporting threshold in order to receive funding for administrative costs. We continue to exceed the reporting rate requirement. We also streamline the housing assistance payment process by offering direct deposit to over 95% of our landlords, which eliminating the need to print, mail, or track paper checks. This also reduces administrative costs and fraudulent transaction. During the COVID-19 pandemic, we remain open to the public with increased safety measures. Housing staff quickly adapted to the challenges presented by the pandemic by establishing new procedure and workflow to ensure continuity of services without interruption. In November 2020, we received an award of 75 Mainstream Voucher, and in May 2021, we received an award of 117 Emergency Housing Voucher. In 2021, we also purged the waiting list to remove outdated application. Over the course of five years, we pulled over 1,400 applications from the waiting list for initial qualification. We also applied for the Family Self-Sufficiency, FSS, grant and received the funding each year. Participation for the Garden Grove FSS program is currently at 144% higher than required by HUD. Since 2020, we have graduated 15 participants from the FSS program and dispersed more than $245,000 in escrow fund to FSS household. Eight of the FSS graduate household left the Section 8 program and moved into unsubsidized housing. In 2023, we partnered with housing authorities of Orange County, Anaheim, Santa Ana, to present information about voucher program and affordable housing resources at the housing forum held in Garden Grove. We participated and presented a housing program overview at the Commission to End Homelessness County Meeting. We conducted outreach effort to potential voucher landlord, provided easy access to program information for landlords and tenant on our website, and offer a listing service for vacant rental unit. Our bilingual staff are available to work with community groups who serve the non-English-speaking population. Interview, briefing session, and inspection are conducted in English, Spanish, Vietnamese, and other languages upon request so that participants are able to access the program fully. Staff receive training on customer service skill, courses on new eligibility HUD requirement such as rent calculation or annual recertification. The inspection staff also completed the new HUD Housing Quality Standard Inspection Training. The supervising staff receiving training on supervision and management, fair housing policy, and financial management. By conducting inspection every two years instead of annually, the Housing Authority can save on inspection-related costs, including inspector fee, staff time, and administrative overhead. By annual inspection also give property manager and owner the opportunity to identify maintenance needs over time in advance, allowing them to plan for significant repair or upgrade. The following are the Housing Authority goals for the next five years. We will continue to explore ways to maximize existing assistance to qualify tenant and improve the quality of assisted housing. Expand the supply of affordable housing by applying for additional funding and housing program that may become available. Continue to collaborate with other agency in the area and perform outreach to provide better access to participant. Open the housing choice voucher waiting list, promote family self-sufficiency, and maintain high-performance CMAP status. It is recommended that the Housing Authority Commissioner conduct the public hearing, adopt the 2025 through 2029 five-year and annual PHA Plan, and authorize the Executive Director to certify the plan. That concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Okay, is there any questions of staff by the commissioners? Seeing none, we will open the public hearing. Do we have any members of the public wishing to speak on the plan? Seeing none, we will close the public hearing, bring it back to commissioners for discussion. I do have one thing I would like added to the goals. And it was brought up by Commissioner Dovin last meeting, and quite frankly, I think it needs to be a goal. And that's to reduce the time, the wait time on the list. We've had people at some of the meetings I've talked to show me their letters, and they've been waiting 12 years. One was waiting 15 years. That's crazy.
If I may, I was prepared for this comment because it has come up a couple of times. I think it's really important for everybody to understand how the process works so we can see how we can achieve that goal. So we receive annual funding from HUD in the amount of approximately $40 million. So HUD has a formula that they give to us to administer this program, and it's about $40 million. They assume a housing assistance payment, or a HAP, of $1,411 per month. So that's sort of averaged out. You know, we do it based on actual income, so it varies from person to person, but that's their assumption in calculating the number of vouchers that we get. So at $40 million, at $1,411, that equates to 2,362 vouchers. That's our allocation. However, in Orange County, the average housing assistance payment is higher than the 1,400. It's actually 1,600. So we provide more assistance than what HUD anticipated we would provide because our rents in Orange County are so high, which means that the actual number of vouchers we were able to issue is less than our total allocated amount. We issue 2,200 vouchers because the HAP payments are more than what was thought that they would be. Once a voucher is issued to the voucher holder, they get to keep it for as long as they want with four exceptions. One, they might unfortunately pass away. Two, they might become ineligible to becoming over income if their income rises. Three, they could be terminated due to not following rules and procedures. Or four, they could leave voluntarily. So those are the four ways a person would be able to relinquish their voucher. So based on those four criteria, we have approximately a 3% turnover rate, which equates to about 66 vouchers a year. So that's how many become available over a year. Our waitlist was established in 2010 with 17,000 people. We, at the end of 2024, we have 1,550 remaining. But you can see at 66 a year, it takes a long time to bring that list down. Of the current remaining, you know, 1,500, we think approximately 600 of those folks qualify for a Garden Grove local preference, which you might recall veteran, domestic violence, Garden Grove resident. We think about 180 of those are qualified as a Garden Grove preference. If once we call, cool through that list, call them, about 50% respond because the list is so old, right? Some of those people are no longer around. And at a rate of 66 per year, we think it's about three years before we'd be able to reopen the waitlist. So understanding that our hands are really tied, we don't have a lot of vouchers. It's all based on funding and the turnover rate, and so we really cannot make that list go down any faster. There's nothing we can do to make that happen. And so I just wanted to make sure everyone understood that, so that that's how the process works, and we absolutely are trying to help as many people as we can.
And by putting it as a goal to reduce the wait times, I don't think we're putting an unnecessary burden saying you shall get the... But by doing that, you're encouraging staff, and we've got pretty bright staff. And sometimes they come up with solutions and think outside the box and, you know, come up with all these great ideas. And I think we should encourage that by putting this as our goal. I know four years, five years ago, we put a goal that we wanted no unhoused veterans. And two years ago, we reported back that Garden Grove is the first city to not have any unhoused veterans. And reducing this 15-year wait, I think you give staff the carrot, they'll run with it, and they'll come up with some creative solutions, and, you know, maybe we go after some other revenue sources. But I don't see that it hurts to add this as a goal. And so I would hope the commission would entertain my motion to add that as a goal.
I have a question. Is HUD the only source of revenue for these vouchers?
Yes. Yes. I mean, we could put general fund toward it if that was the purview of the city council, right? But that is the funding source for this program.
Okay. And to your knowledge, and if you don't know, that's okay. Are there other agencies that provide similar types of funding towards a program like the vouchers that we have here?
I'm not aware of any other agencies that provide the level of funding that HUD, the federal government, provides. We do have a tenant-based program, TBRA, a tenant-based rental assistance program, where we use different HUD funding under our Community Development Block Grant Program, where we provide, it's kind of like a voucher, but these vouchers go for a really long time. Our program's 24 months. So after 24 months, we can no longer continue to assist that same person under the TBRA program per HUD guidelines. Again, it's a different funding source, but so we can't really add that to this because the timelines are different.
So it sounds like we're really constrained here by whatever comes down to us from the federal government and from the Department of Housing and Urban Development. Am I correct?
Yes.
Okay. So it seems to me that our hands are really tied, even you guys as staff, with regards to what we can really accomplish, sans some sort of intervention from the federal government?
Finding additional funding sources that match up with what this particular program accomplishes would be very difficult. I'm just not aware of any others because they all have different strings attached.
I think it's very important for us in goal-setting to, you know, be mindful of what exactly we're capable of, both as a council, but also be realistic about the expectations that we place on our staff. And I think that while it is a worthwhile goal, and it's a very honorable goal, I think that this is kind of a very, a very big burden to be putting on you guys right now, especially because we are in such a state of uncertainty with regards to funding for the present program as is. So I think that for the time being, I would be okay with not adding any additional goals because I think we should figure out where we stand now and if we're going to even be able to continue having this program in the future.
First, I want to say thank to Council Bridgerton and Council Dovin for bringing that up. From the day one, when I first became a council member, I had many people reaching out to me related to the topic, and I passed information to our staff that I was so surprised what they have to wait 10, 15 years. And, you know, you think about five, seven years, and then 10, 15 years. At first, when I thought that was crazy, and then, you know, talking to our staff, learn more about what you just explained, then I understand where that is. But one thing that I want to bring up, talking about looking outside or outside the box, right? I read through the report, 37 pages, the accomplishment that we have, let me go back to that one page, but I think number one was there was so far, and our staff were able to work with the housing and able to get 1.4 mill from cutting assess, you know, money from somewhere and were able to get additional money to help. And not just that, but a couple weeks ago, our council member got a tour to see all the affordable housing that we have. You know, we look at disability group or the, we talk about the domestic violence, and so different things that we're looking at. So I'm glad that we have that, and Council Bridgerton mentioned earlier about the veteran, we have zero veteran homeless, so that's the accomplishment. So I agree that we could have a goal, or in a way that like something that we're looking at or pay attention to, see where else we could cut the cost or so that way we could bring more people to get the voucher. But looking at from 17,000 to 1,400, that's a big number. But we, of course, all of us would love to see more of that. So yeah, keep doing the good work. Thank you.
I would just like to clarify two things. One is that we have no longer anyone on the waiting list that's a veteran. So that was one of the preference areas, and correct, two years ago, we went through all of that. But doesn't mean we don't have any veterans that aren't homeless. I'm not sure about that, but I just wanted to make sure we clarify. The second thing, I did want to talk about the additional funding that you mentioned. Last year in July, we were notified by HUD that we were in, it was called shortfall, meaning that because our rent differential, that HAP payment was so much bigger because of rising rents in Orange County, they said you need to stop issuing new vouchers. So as of July of last year, we did not issue one new voucher per the direction of HUD because we were about to exceed, because we did exceed, we exceeded our annual allocation. We had to wait all the way until December, and that's where that extra money came from. HUD pulls aside money for agencies that get into this situation, and if they have it, they are able to give it to us. So luckily, we were able to recover that because otherwise, we provide the money upfront, and it becomes a general fund obligation if we don't get that reimbursement from HUD. So that was good, that we got it. But that shows that we are doing all that we can to provide assistance to these folks that are eligible. And one of the accomplishments that Tiana mentioned is that we spend all our money. There are a number of housing authorities throughout this country that don't spend all of their money. So I would just, I understand it's a really long time for people to wait, but if you look at Orange County, Anaheim, Santa Ana, because of the nature of this area being so expensive to live, they are having similar experiences, their waitlists are just as long, if not longer. We really are doing all that we can within our abilities to get that down as quickly as we can, and we will continue to strive to do that. It's in our interest, it's in the community's interest to do so, but I'd wanted to clarify those points.
I just have a question. Is there a process or a priority of how we reward the application? First come, first served, or something like that?
The top preference would be veteran and domestic violence victims. And then all the local preference with those who work or live in Garden Grove, and then the last would be the non-local.
Thank you.
And after that, it is first come, first served. So we go through those preferences, yes?
And they open it up periodically? It doesn't sound like there's a consensus here for my motion to put a goal of reducing the time, and it is sad. I mean, I get we're kind of got the back against the wall, but I do think having a goal and putting a common objective. Sometimes things happen, you know, when we're all talking to various congresspeople or whatnot, sometimes we mention it and maybe get a little bit more money. But with that being said, I'll entertain a motion on the actual plan.
Second.
I second.
Well, okay, we got a, we got a motion and a second with Commissioner Tran. Call for the vote.
Chair Brightingam?
Yes.
Vice Chair Dovin?
Yes.
Commissioner Tran?
Yes.
Commissioner Tan Nguyen?
Yes.
Commissioner Philip Nguyen?
Yes.
Commissioner Moniton?
Yes.
Commissioner Klumpstein?
Yes.
And Commissioner Adesegi?
Yes.
Motion received, eight yes votes.
And I will close this meeting of the Garden Grove Housing Authority. I think our next meeting is, what, next month? So, back to the council.
At this time, we'll go ahead and move into oral communication. I have a handful of pink cards. We will start with Mona Marche. Time limit of three minutes. Thank you. Time limit of three minutes. Thank you.
Madam Mayor and City Council Members, Mona Marche. Well, I heard it was only three minutes and I have three things to talk about. I'm going to just speak about one, boom, go fast. And I will email the mayor about the, about the homeless issue that I want to get into deeply and about the coyotes. But I'd like to speak about that stretch of road on Gilbert between Lampson and Orangewood and specifically from Chapman to Orangewood. It's very dangerous. I've nearly gotten hit a number of times by people racing. Perhaps that one lane that has the left turn arrow there could be changed and they could have a yield sign there. People using that as a racing lane to get in front of everybody else. I've seen two accidents already. Pretty soon, there's going to be somebody killed. Something needs to be done about that. This morning, I was, I was driving and someone came from a red light and wanted to get in front of me. And there was a police officer just up, but he missed it. But it's very dangerous and this, and the lady I was sitting next to was saying how it's very dangerous for her to take a walk around Gilbert. And I've had to be very careful of people and walking their dogs. There's no sidewalk, there's no shoulder, there's no nothing. It's very dangerous from Lampson on towards Walmart and Orangewood. So if someone could take a look at it, it's really important. It should be taken care of right away. Really quick about the coyotes. It's really getting out of hand. There are so many of them. I don't know what you can do about it before they start. I mean, I've been hearing they're attacking people's dogs. People don't know that if they leave dog poop on the lawn, that attracts them. Some people are leaving food out at night for whether it's their cats or their dogs. One woman was going to feed the coyote at night so they wouldn't bother her animal. I don't know if they have any like trap and release because they're all coming down from the hills. If there's trapping release or fixing the females, I don't know what, if there's any reality to it, but something needs to be done because in April, we're having the birthing season again. So it's going to be even more of them. And then they go through the weaning and wanting to eat more. If there's an open door, they will go into a house. So something needs to be done about the coyotes. And so Mayor, I will be sending you something about the homeless. I've got quite a bit. I watched the last council meeting. There's a lot to be said about it. There's a lot of people missing. But one thing I do want to say that most druggies may be homeless, but most homeless are not druggies. Nobody asks them, why are you homeless? What caused it to you? So it's the time now. Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, next up, Lan Nguyen?
Good evening again, Mayor, council members. I'm Lan Nguyen. I'm here to ask for your favorable consideration of item number two on the agenda today with the extension of the time to open the Marian Day this coming summer. Marian Day is another marker would put on the great landmark of the city itself with the Christ Cathedral. Marian Day is, will welcome tens of thousands Catholic faithful from around the region to come to, to celebrate the honoring of Mother Mary. Marian Day will mark the great gathering of not only the Catholic faithful, but only celebrate the diversity in the great city here. And as a member of the Catholic community here, we always grateful for the city of Garden Grove, always supporting our religious worshiping in our, in the city. We, we here to ask that you grant the extension of the operation time of the event from 10 o'clock to 11 o'clock on the, on the, on that Marian Day. And also, we also ask the city to consider to make this extension a permanent to this application that we submit every year so that we don't have to add, come back and ask for this only specific extension so that when we submit the application every year, we don't have to worry about making this special consideration next year to come. And again, as a member of the Catholic community, we, we always grateful for the unwavering support of this city to support our religious endeavor in the city. And thank you for your favorable consideration of this consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Kevin Tran?
Good evening, mayors, council members, city staff. My name is Kevin Tran. I am the president of the Vietnamese Catholic community here in the county of Orange. And first of all, I just want to say thank you. As I look around, many familiar faces that I've seen and talked with throughout the years, especially when I first came and request for the extension of the operation hours for our Marian Days at Christ Cathedral last year. And so this actually marks the fifth anniversary of this event. This event, as Mr. Lern has mentioned earlier, it's generate a lot of excitement, anticipations. It's getting a lot of traction. We have, our event brings together over 20,000 people on an annual basis. We have volunteer groups, even CalOptimas, and many of the vicinity's businesses have also joined us and acknowledged the work that we do. And so I am here as a resident of the city of Garden Grove and behalf of the community here, I would like to ask for your considerations of giving us this extension so that we can continue to move forward and be operated with, you know, timely manners and also able to conduct all of the events that we think are very beneficial and also bringing a lot of the benefits to, not only to our community, but also to the benefits for our businesses as well. As you can imagine, the accommodations, industries, as far, as far as also the food services industries will be very beneficial, benefiting to, to this event as well. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Next, I have Juan Carlos Ramos.
Hello, good evening. Hello, Mayor. I'm on behalf, my name's Juan Carlos Ramos. I work on behalf of the Roman Catholic Diocese of Orange, in addition with Kevin Tran and Lynn. They've already mentioned and pleaded their case for the curfew extension to 11:00 PM. In addition to that Marian Day event, we're going to be having two, three other events. One other one that we'd like to, three other events that we'd like to curfew extended to 11:00 PM. One, the first one's going to be Thursday, June 19th, 2025, which will be Bishop Van's 20th year as the bishop presiding over the Diocese of Orange. And they plan to have a celebration there that evening. Also Friday and Saturday, October 17th of this year for the I Am Eucharist. And we're expecting to have about 15,000 people. And they would like to extend the curfew hours to 11:00 PM as well. And lastly, it'll be Friday and Saturday for November 14th and 15th, which we expect to have another 15,000 people here on campus at Garden Grove to celebrate St. John as a patron saint for the Diocese. Please consider extending this so people and the community can get engaged and in fellowship and in faith. And thank you for your time.
Thank you. Nicholas Dibs?
Members of the council, my name is Nicholas Dibs. I am here on a couple of, few things. Since Lan Nguyen is here, president of the school board, I do want to mention that not only should the school board do this, but also the city council. And I'm asking that you please put this on the agenda. For those of you that are new to the council, at the end of the meeting, when you go around making your comments, one of you can ask that something go on the agenda for the next meeting. And I'd like to ask that Philip Nguyen or, or, or one of you would please put on the agenda for the next meeting or request that it go on for the next meeting that we allow people or that the, to ask the staff to look into the option of having people call in. I don't always agree with what everybody says, but I agree that everyone has a chance. Everyone needs to be heard. We have a First Amendment and everyone should be heard. And you need to improve the, the civic engagement. So there are people who can't be here for whatever reason. They're disabled, they're elderly, whatever. Allow them to call in like the city of Santa Ana does on their council meetings. So I'd like to ask Councilman Nguyen, if you'd please, at the end of the meeting, ask that it be put on the agenda for the next meeting. And I'm going to ask that the school board also do the same thing. Allow people to call in so that if they can't attend, they can at least be heard. Now, let me move to something else, which is, I don't have enough time. There are people here from Christ Cathedral. I, I want to say Matthew 5:9, blessed are the peacemakers, for they shall be called the children of God. I come before you with concerns because December 10th is proclaimed as Human Rights Day in Garden Grove. And, and our country doesn't seem to have much in the way of human rights these days. You're going to adjourn your meeting, I believe, in memory of Gabriel Mafi, who was a young, a young child that passed away, Dr. Mafi's and Eugene's child. Every, every life is precious. Every child is precious. And it doesn't matter whether they're Jews, Muslims, or Christians. I'm a member of Jewish Voice for Peace, and I come to you and say silence is complicity. Injustice against one is injustice against all. What the citizens of Garden Grove need to know is that a few days ago, over 200 children were obliterated and murdered with US weapons by the Zionist forces in Israel. And I stood before this council and said Joe Biden was a war criminal for allowing this to happen. And I'm not going to say that Donald Trump is a war criminal if he allows it to continue to happen. So go to democracynow.org and learn the truth. The hospital was, was bombed two days ago or three days ago. This is wrong. The forced starvation of over 2 million people since the, since the 2nd of March. Thank you. Democracynow.org.
Kyle Mason?
Good evening, everybody. I'm Kyle Mason. Cindy Tran, I want to thank you for showing me a picture or so. I would like to see more of them, and I pray that you're showing them to the councilmen. I would like you, you don't have my number, please take my card with my phone number and get ahold of me. You went down there. You showed me a painting that looks better down there than it does above up in our area. The graffiti down there in the hallway and down below is unreal. Well, guess what? I have a picture right here with a guy's pulling a wagon yesterday at 4:01. Went over the wall and they're down there now. And they're painting. If you guys cleaned it up, probably a new paint job. Go down there and take some more pictures. Want to put a stop to it. Want to put a fence around that area so they can't get down there. Please. And the block next to me, there's no fence. And they're coming through. Please, we got to put a stop to this. It's like a freeway of homeless. It's like the lady said, on Gilbert Street. Everybody's afraid even to walk to Walmart, to walk in, to go into the area there. That riverbed is unreal. You guys need to put a real fence there. You guys put a real nice fence down there on Shannon, but how about putting some barbed wire across the top to stop the people from climbing over? The fence you put made it even easier for them to go in there. I know, I watch them. Please? I would like to put a stop to it all before we take things into our own hands. I know I made a comment in the past. We're about ready to do it. And if I have to go to jail, won't be the first time. And I'm not afraid to do it either. And neither are a couple of my buddies. Please? You saw what was down there. You showed me that picture. You have a little bit of an understanding. You're not there at night. I called 911 twice on Monday to get the sheriffs to come out. You talk about a joke? My God, they send you over to a recording. Now, if you're on the streets calling 911 and they send you to a recording, have pen and paper ready. What the heck is that? How can you have pen and paper handy when you're on 911 trying to get help? But yet the police won't come because it's the riverbed. It has to be the sheriffs. How about getting you both out there? How about getting it down there and put a fence around it and clean it all up or we, they won't go down there? Please? Before we all go off and then you won't have any new neighbors? Are you guys wanting to sell all the property around the whole area? Because everybody's going to be in jail because they're protecting their properties and defending what we got? That's what's going to wind up happening. Please? I'm begging you, please? How long is it going to be before the fence goes up?
Your time is up, sir.
Thank you.
Before we conclude oral communication, we do have a written communication this evening. This is from Christ Cathedral Parish, Diocese of Orange, to extend the operating hours and make an exemption to the city's noise ordinance for three separate events scheduled at Christ Cathedral property in 2025. We have a report.
Yes, and Ms. Deputy Director Janet Paliya is here to provide that report.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the city council. Staff received a written request on behalf of the Christ Cathedral Parish, Diocese of Orange, who would like to request approval to extend the operating hours and make an exemption to the city's noise ordinance for three separate events scheduled at the Christ Cathedral property. Over the years, the Diocese of Orange has organized events and conferences on their private property. The annual event Marian Days has been held since 2021 and draws Vietnamese faithful from Orange County, Los Angeles, San Diego, San Bernardino, and San Jose. In 2023 and 2024, the event welcomed approximately 20,000 attendees over two days, including a significant presence of out-of-state and international visitors. This year, the Diocese of Orange will be organizing the annual Marian Days on July 11th and July 12th, as well as two conferences that will be held on October 17th and 18th and November 14th and 15th. The Diocese of Orange would like to request to extend the operating hours from 10:00 PM to 11:00 PM for these three events that will be held at the Christ Cathedral. Additionally, this request would also require the approval to make an exception to the Garden Grove Municipal Code to the hours listed in the noise ordinance establishing lower noise thresholds after 10:00 PM. Approval of this request will not have a financial impact to the city. The police department will be reimbursed for all personnel services provided during these events. Staff recommends that the city council consider the written request on behalf of the Christ Cathedral Parish, Diocese of Orange. This concludes my staff report. Representatives from the organization, as well as staff are available to answer any of your questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Colleagues, any comments, questions, or I'll entertain a motion.
I, I do have one brief question, and this is for Omar. I am a parishioner of Christ Cathedral. Do I have to recuse myself?
So the quick answer is no, the conflict rules apply to economic interests. Unless you're getting paid.
Nope. I give them the money.
Well, then you're good.
Is that also a second?
That's a second.
Yeah, that's a second.
All right, motion and a second. Call for the vote, please.
Motion received. Seven yes votes.
All right, we will recess city council and we have other legislative bodies. Business to attend to will move to successor agency. I have no pink cards. Is anybody wishing to speak? Oh, we have to do roll, sorry.
Member Brigham?
Here.
Member Nguyen?
Here.
Member Tran?
Yeah.
Member Dovin?
Present.
Member Aristegui?
Here.
Vice Chair Muñetón?
Here.
And Chair Klumpenstein?
Here. We did oral communication actually with other legislative bodies. So we'll move on to the consent calendar. I have one item, receive and file the minutes. Do I have a motion? Motion and a second. Call for the vote, please.
Motion received. Seven yes votes.
Any matters from members? Seeing none, we will adjourn and move to sanitary district. And we'll call roll, please.
Member Brigham?
Here.
Member Nguyen? Member Nguyen?
Here.
Member Dovin?
Present.
Member Munyaton?
Here.
Member Adistegi?
Here.
Vice President Tran?
Here.
And President Klumpenstein?
Here. We already completed oral communication, we'll move on to consent. Again, receive and file the minutes from February 25th, I'll entertain a motion.
Second.
Motion and a second, please call for the vote.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
Under items for consideration, we have number two, and I believe we have a staff report, yes?
Yes, item number two is awarded contract to SOMAS for professional engineering services for the preparation of the 2025 sewer system rehabilitation plan, Phase Three. And Deputy Director Sam Kim is here to provide that report.
Madam President, and members of sanitary district board, tonight, the sanitary district board is being asked to award a contract to SOMAS for professional engineering services for preparing of the 2025 sewer system rehabilitation plan, Phase Three. The last evaluation of the district's sewer system rehab plan, Phase Three area was conducted in 2005. The state recommends evaluating the sewer system every 10 years. District staff recommends reassessing the condition of a Phase Three area. This area is located south of Orange Avenue, west of Ninth Street, north of Lamson Avenue, and east of Beach Boulevard. Staff requested proposals from three engineering firms and received three proposals. Staff reviewed and rated the proposals and determined SOMAS was the most qualified firm and would provide the most qualified services to the district. The negotiated professional services agreement is for just over $1.9 million. There is no impact to general funds. This project is included in the adopted fiscal year 2025-26 sewer capital improvement budget. It is recommended that the district board award a contract to SOMAS for professional engineering services for preparing of the 2025 sewer system rehabilitation plan, Phase Three, in the amount of $1,908,747, and authorize the general manager to execute the agreement on behalf of the sanitary district. This concludes staff's report, and staff is here to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Colleagues, questions, comments? Do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second, call for the vote, please.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
And matters, anything from board members? Seeing none, we will adjourn and reconvene the City Council meeting. We will move on to the consent calendar. We already voted on numbers three and four, so I'll entertain a motion on the balance. I don't, no, not on the balance, we did not.
Second.
Motion and a second, call for the vote, please.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
All right, number 11, items for consideration.
Yes, this evening, for items for consideration, number 11 is an approval of a cost-sharing agreement, an introduction and first reading of an ordinance updating the Cross Connection Control Program. The ordinance entitled An Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Garden Grove, Amending Section 14.20.020 of Chapter 14.20 of Title 14 of the Garden Grove Municipal Code pertaining to the Cross Connection Control Program. And Deputy Director Sam Kim will provide the report.
Madam Mayor, and members of City Council, tonight, City Council is being asked to approve a cost-sharing agreement for developing a cross-connection control plan, and an ordinance being proposed for you to introduce and pass the first reading on updating the Cross Connection Control Program. Local agencies are required by the state to develop a cross-connection control plan by July 1, 2025. A cost-sharing agreement among a majority of other Orange County agencies has been developed to use one consultant to provide services to develop a specific hazard assessment and cross-connection control plan. The city's cost share to enter into this agreement is about $600, I mean, $6,200, and will be funded through water enterprise funds. There is no impact to the general funds. For the proposed ordinance update on the existing cross-connection control program, it would replace Title 17 of the California Code of Regulations with the Cross Connection Control Policy Handbook and place the state Water Resources Control Board as a governing body overseeing this handbook. It is recommended that the City Council introduce and conduct the first reading of the ordinance updating the city's cross-connection control program and pass it to second reading, and authorize the city manager to execute the cost-sharing agreement for developing a cross-connection control plan. This concludes staff's report, and staff is here to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you for the report. Colleagues, again, any comments or questions, or I'll entertain a motion.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second, call for the vote, please.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
Item number 12.
Item 12 is the approval of amendments to agreements with Associated Soils Inc. and GMU Geotechnical Services Inc. to exercise the first option year and increase each agreement by 150,000 per year, and Deputy Director Sam Kim will provide that report.
Madam Mayor, and members of City Council, tonight, City Council is being asked to approve amendments to the agreements with Associated Soils Incorporated and GMU Geotechnical Services Incorporated for on-call professional geotechnical services. These services are needed for capital improvement work, for street paving projects, and the construction of water and sewer lines. There is no impact to general funds, because we are using water, sewer, and street funding, and these costs are included within the capital improvement project costs. In March of 2023, the city had originally executed three on-call contracts with Associated Soil, GMU Geotechnical Services, and GeoCon West. After entering into these contracts, the city learned that GeoCon West did not meet the compliance with the Community Workforce Agreement requirements. Therefore, staff could only use services from the remaining two contractors, and this led to a faster-than-expected depletion of contract funds. Staff is recommending to redirect GeoCon West contract funds to the remaining two contracts by increasing each contract from $150,000 to $300,000 for each remaining option year. There is no impact to the overall cost and no additional appropriation is needed. Staff is recommending the approval of the amendment agreements by authorizing the city manager to execute them on behalf of the city. This concludes staff's report, and staff is here to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Comments or questions? Yes.
Question, when they do one of these geotech reports, is there a timeframe associated with it? Is it only valid for, let's say, five years, or 10 years, or is there a set time when they do it?
No, there's no set time for it, but if it's a design work, within two years, we'd like to do it again, because there might be change in groundwater levels and other things on the ground. But the, mostly, we use that for construction is compaction tests and all that stuff during construction.
And do we maintain a database of those results over the years of construction? Like, 20 years ago, we're doing Chapman, and we did the geotech test, and we've got that on file somewhere?
I mean, each, each project has a design done, so if we dig it up, probably there is a copy of old geotech investigation report.
It just, it seems like something that's ripe for, we can, you know, if there's no date ending on these reports, if we had a database as we get these reports in over the years, we don't have to do it again 20 years from now, 30 years from now, you know?
It's kept changing, so.
So the soil does change in, and all that, so you have to do it, refresh it over and over.
Yeah, it's a liability issue, once we designed something, and then when time for construction, let's say it lacked like two years or three years down the road, and then they found it be different than the report, then the city's liable to pay for the change orders.
Okay, yeah, it often comes up with homeowners when they're putting in a pool or something, they have to get one of these reports, and I thought, well, you know, if the city was compiling these over the years, we pretty much have one for the entirety of the city, we wouldn't have to pay for these anymore, you know? Maybe save the cities and our taxpayers some money, but it looks like we have, it's, we have to do this every time.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. With that, I'll make a motion.
Could I add a quick question?
Yes.
Yeah, sorry, somehow I missed this one during the agenda review yesterday. So in here, it said that the proposal said not exit 400,000, and then additional 150,000 per year, so is that equal with the work that they have to do additional? Or how did you calculate or get to that 150,000 justification?
This is just on-call contract, so we're going to have like 150 and added 150, making 300,000, as needed basis. Any construction going on, or any design work going on, we'll be using them, like one or two, you know, one of the two contractors, the service test or the compaction test, just as needed basis.
Okay, thank you. That was it. City turn, okay. Any other comments, questions? We have a motion, I'll entertain a second. Going once, going twice.
I'll second.
Motion and a second, call for the vote, please.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
All right, item number 13.
Item 13 is an approval of implementation of merchant fee payment by customers for electronic payment transactions, and Director Patricia Song is here to provide that report.
Madam Clerk, good evening, Madam Mayor and members of the City Council. Thank you for approving the contract with Point and Pay LLC for the merchant services during last meeting. This service allows the city to accept and process electronic payments and significantly improves the convenience for customers. However, annual cost, as I shared last meeting, is about 450,000. City Council has asked staff to explore ways of recovering this cost, and we did talk to Point and Pay. We identified two options to achieve the cost recovery goal. Option one, the city will conduct a fee study and implement a user fee for credit and debit card users. Option two is that Point and Pay would directly charge customers with a transaction fee, removing the city's involvement in user fee setup and collection. Staff have successfully negotiated a competitive rate of 2.2% of the transaction amount with a $2 minimum charge for each transaction using debit and credit card payments. So same goes with the digital wallets, like Google Pay or Apple Pay. So in terms of cost impact, under option one, the city's annual cost still remains about 450,000, and then we'll recover that from a fee that would be charged to the users. Under option two, customers pay the convenience fee directly to Point and Pay, and the city incurs no additional merchant fees. So staff recommends option number two for several reasons. First, it removes staff involvement in establishing and managing a new user fee, improving efficiency. Additionally, it enhances transparency, as the pre-negotiated fee is clearly displayed to customer before making the payment. Last but not least, the fee is locked in, city approval is required for any changes, ensuring it remains competitive. So for electronic checks, Point and Pay charges 20 cents per transaction, and we recommend the city absorb this fee, offering customer a free online payment option. This will improve convenience and enhance overall customer experience. Based on historical data, approximately 100,000 eChecks payments are made annually, resulting in an estimated cost of 20,000 to the city every year. Additionally, the city currently limits debit and credit card transactions to 5,000, this was an effort to minimize the merchant costs. If option two is implemented, this limit can be removed, further improving convenience and efficiency. To assess how our neighboring cities are handling merchant services, service fees, we also surveyed 12 Orange County cities. Of those surveyed, six cities have already implemented a convenience fee, and three other cities are actively considering it. So without cost recovery, the annual merchant service fee will continue to grow as more customers ship to electronic payment methods. This reduces funding available for other programs that would benefit overall residents. While enhancing payment convenience remains a top priority, placing the financial burden on general taxpayer is not the desired outcome. Therefore, staff appreciates the City Council's direction and consideration of implementing this cost recovery effort, and we recommend option two, having Point and Pay directly charge customers the pre-established processing fee for the City Council to consider. And that concludes my report, thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tim?
I think I'm the genius behind option two. Oh, I just woke up for that, let's vote on it, thank you.
Is that a motion?
Yes.
Motion.
I have a motion and a second, call for the vote, please.
Thank you, staff.
That's why I love my council members.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
All right, I'm going to, again, pull things a slight bit out of order this evening. Normally, we would start going around the horn for matters, but we are adjourning in memory of someone very special this evening, and so we all have on our ribbons to show our support for Gabriel Mafi, and so if you'll permit me, I'd like to read something here. Gabriel Mafi, Michael Mafi, was born on November 25, 2015, to Gabriella and Eugene Mafi. His parents were very surprised to hear they were expecting, as they were 48 years old at the time, with two grown children. Soon, a blood test revealed a high probability of trisomy 18. Initially, expected not to thrive and to sleep most of a short life due to his numerous medical conditions, Gabriel's joyous and toothy smile, positive attitude through adversity, true grit and tenacious will to live in spite of numerous extreme hardships and setbacks inspired countless others. He did not wish for things he did not have, and he was never bothered by the expectations or opinions of others. Instead, he was happy to be exactly who God made him to be, and bravely fulfilled his purpose here to the best of his ability, as long as he could, with the loving support of his family and care team. Sadly, Gabriel passed on February 21st after experiencing nonstop seizures. Nevertheless, Gabriel exceeded all expectations and repeatedly beat seemingly insurmountable odds for over nine years to live an exciting and fulfilling life of love. He now is in the company of the angels and saints whose name he bears, and with his grandparents and other ancestors who loved him so much. His life and legacy will live on forever in the precious memories and photographs that remain here, and especially through his heavenly intercession for those who love and miss him most. Rest in peace, little Gabriel. Thank you so much, and it's such an honor to have Dr. Mafi and her husband Eugene Mafi in attendance this evening to hear these words, and from myself and the community, we're with you. We know what a difficult time this has been, God bless you both, and thank you for being here again this evening. Before we adjourn, we will have our matters from council, I'll start with District 6, please, this evening.
First and foremost, my utmost condolences to Dr. Mafi and Eugene, and with you in these difficult times, it's always hard with, when young people leave us too soon, and you know, I know you guys loved him very much, so thank you guys for being here as well, and we're with you in solidarity. So I want to start off by kind of giving a little recount of what's happened since we last met. First and foremost, I want to thank Bill Murray and Sam Kim for leading me on a wonderful tour of the Public Works Yard, as well as our amazing water facilities, they showed us the new PFOS filters. I was expecting not giant, giant structures, but wow, I learned a lot. So thank you guys so much for the very detailed tour, and also for answering all of my questions, because I like water, and you know, I'm a little bit of a nerd about these things, so thank you guys for your patience, I know you're listening to me from the other room, so gracias. I also would like to thank Chief Alfara and Officer Robbie for helping us organize a little ride-along. I had the opportunity to do a police ride-along with our GGPd the same day as my colleague Yessenya, and I got the opportunity to ride with Officer Robbie, and we drove around Yessenya and I got the opportunity to ride with Officer Robbie and we, we drove around the area where we have most of District Six and I saw, you know, kind of like the day-to-day of what our PD goes through and in real time saw the work that they do when they encounter, you know, different types of either disturbances or traffic issues and something that we all talk about here, homelessness, how, how they interact when we see folks on the street that might be in need or that might be breaking parts of our code. So thank you guys so much for, for showing me, you know, more of what you guys do and I appreciate so much that, that you took me along, that you kept us safe. I made it back in one piece, so as you can imagine, it was a, it was a good, it was a good day. I also would like to thank Gabby for the wonderful tour of Buena Clinton that she gave me earlier today, the Buena Clinton Resource Center, one of our wonderful community centers here in Garden Grove, along with the Magnolia Community Center. But Buena Clinton is in District Six and it services the immediate neighborhood and offers lots of after-school programming and clubs for the kids and offers classes and enrichment for the adults in the community as well. They do a lot of really great work, so I was really glad that they gave me a great behind-the-scenes. I'm gonna be joining them again on the twenty-seventh and this is also an invitation to the folks in the community that Buena Clinton Resource Center is having a spring family night on March twenty-seventh from five PM to seven PM. And there will be a dinner from Bracken's Kitchen and it's gonna be very Easter, it's gonna be like Easter themed, so there's gonna be pictures with the bunnies and egg hunts and all the fun stuff that has to, that goes along with Easter. Very, very fun and exciting. And just to build on more with that, that's going on in District Six, we also have the upcoming beautified Buena Clinton event on April twenty-sixth from nine AM to one PM where there will be bulky item pickup, graffiti removal and different types of beautification there for the neighborhood. Code enforcement will be there and we're just, you know, gonna spruce the place up, so I encourage folks to show up and help out. It's gonna be really, really great and I encourage the residents there to, you know, if you have those bulky items that you need to get rid of, to, you know, start thinking about what you're gonna set aside because that's all gonna be available for pickup by Republic Services. Ooh, excuse me. Next, I also do want to thank Lon Nguyen for coming and speaking on behalf of Christ Cathedral. As I mentioned earlier, I am a Persianer. I love the Marian Days. It's a wonderful event every year. I'm a bigger fan of the food court. It's wonderful, so I'm really excited to be joining you guys again this year. My, my last two bits, I'm gonna give some congratulations. Firstly, to our own homelessness liaisons analyst, Kristi Lee. She was honored by Senator Tom Umberg as a, one of the twenty-twenty-five Women of Distinction for the public, for the public safety portion of his awards. And I think it's really amazing that one of our staff got honored in such a wonderful way because she's been doing such great work as our homelessness liaison and I know that she has a very great and bright future and career ahead of her. So I know we just, this is just the beginning of her, of her great trajectory. So congratulations so much, Kristi. Another bit of congratulations that I want to extend is to my predecessor and to my very good friend, Kim Nguyen Pinalosa and her husband, David Pinalosa, who welcomed their new baby, Lucas Elias Pinalosa. He is perfect and wonderful. His tithiary, cannot wait to meet him. I'm, I'm recovering from a cold, so I haven't met him yet, but I'm, I'm so excited that, that Penny's a big sister now, so I hope that if you guys didn't all know, you guys send Kim her congratulations, like David too, but like mostly Kim, right? So on that note, congratulations to the Nguyen Pinalosas and I'm, I'm so excited for you guys. And that's all for me.
Good evening, everyone. I want to start off to, by applauding Doig Intermediate for Action Committee for the dedication to advocating for the school mural project. As a former Doig Spartan, this initiative is especially close to my heart. I am so proud of the students for being so civic-minded and making action to make our school environment even more vibrant. Your passion and involvement are truly inspiring and thank you. Recently, I also had the opportunity to tour Public Works Department and I had, I, I was truly impressed by the hard work and dedication of the team. I was also able to ride along with them to various sites, gaining firsthand insight into the important work they do every day to maintain our infrastructure and ensure public safety. It's clear they play a viral role in keeping our city running smoothly. I'm excited to work alongside them and support their, their efforts to make our community even stronger. I also had the privilege in joining Mayor and my fellow council member for a productive retreat where we took the time to discuss our shared priorities and goals for this new council. It was a great opportunity to align our vision and work together on strategies that will guide us to serve our community. A big thank you to the staff for organizing the, the retreat and making it such a successful and insightful experience. Thank you so much. I am excited to collaborate and make meaningful progress on the issues that matter most to our residents. I also had the amazing opportunity to tour Orange County Fire Authority Headquarters. It was an experience I will never forget. I got to try on firefighter uniform and I was able to use a fire extinguisher and even watch my kids use the hose to stop in a make-believe fire. Most importantly, I had the chance to talk to brave firefighters who serve our community in Garden Grove. Your dedication and commitment in keeping us safe is truly inspiring and I am grateful for all that you do to protect and serve our, our city. So thank you to OCFA for the invitation. After OCFA, I participated on a ride along with the Garden Grove Police Department. We patrolled District Five and visited some of our local parks. It was eye-opening to see some of the problem areas firsthand and I am glad our PD is committed to addressing these issues. I want the men and women at, at our police department to know that I, I fully support them and I am dedicated to ensure they have what they need to be successful. I want to give a special shout-out to Officer Penella. Thank you for your commitment to our community, your spirit of teamwork and for reflecting the values that define the Garden Grove Police Department. I also had a great time attending the ribbon-cutting morning, mornings coffee in Garden Grove, right here in District Five alongside Mayor and Ariana. It was so exciting to have a, it's so exciting to have a new coffee spot just steps away from City Hall. It's a perfect addition to the Steel Craft community and I'm looking forward to seeing them be successful. Here's to many great cups of coffee and even better conversations. Also, just a quick reminder that on this Saturday, March twenty-ninth, from two to three, I will be hosting my first of several meet, meet and greets. I'd love to connect with you and hear thoughts and discuss how we can work together to make our community even better. If you'd like to attend, please reach out to me via email at yesseniam@ggcity.org to request a RSVP link and I hope to see you there. Lastly, I want to close my comments with acknowledging the Mafi family. I am deeply saddened to hear about your loss. Over the eight, over the past eight years, as the wife of board member, I've had the privilege of getting to know Superintendent Gabriella Mafi and her family very well. My heart goes out to you during this incredibly difficult time. As a teacher, I look up to Gabriella not only as a remarkable professional, professional, but also as a wonderful mother who shows incredible strength and love. My thoughts and prayers are with you.
Only a couple of things. I, I thank you, council and mayor, for voting on the option two because we are experiencing some difficulty with our budget. It's expected. So we're, have to build in some belt tightening measures into our finance department and we have a very strong finance department that's its own Department of Government Efficiency. I'm proud to say that we are our own watchdogs and we, we are responsible for every dime that we spend on behalf of our residents, but we, we are experiencing some challenges with our budget, so I'm, I'm gonna be very price-sensitive on every dime. And thank you, mayor and council, for pulling me with me on that because we, we owe it to our, our citizens to limit what we spend with the general funds because at the end of the day, we need it for very important things and the convenience fee is, is, is very common to many cities. And I thank you, our residents and our customers, for sharing that so that the city can free up those funds for other much, much more important things that we need to expend. April is Black April, but I don't want to dwell on that too much other than to observe that we lost a lot of great patriotic Americans and people who could be here with us. Fifty years ago, I was a refugee child. I see myself as a child of peace, not a child of war. So we celebrate our new life here in the United States and we owe everything that we have to the Americans that were here, took us in, raised us up and made us who we are. And that's why I'm here. I'm trying to give back to the people who took us in, made us their own and I'm proud to be an American every day. I was the first one in my family to become a US citizen at the age of eighteen because I went and applied myself. I couldn't wait. As soon as I turned eighteen, I applied and I took the oath of the US citizenship and it's, it's something that I encourage everyone to do. If you haven't, it's, it's the time of your life. Put in for US citizenship and become an, an American and join this great family. And last, I want to end on that note that we are all each other's family. We are extended family, GG USD, City of Garden Grove. Trustee Lon Nguyen is here the whole night. Dr. Mafi and her husband's here and we celebrate you, your strength, your courage. My wife, Deanna Nguyen, and I had our last child and she was forty-five. We went, we went through a battery of testing. My, my baby was pricked in the womb to test for all sorts of risks. So there, there was no certainty, but we were blessed, just as you were. And I want to dedicate in memoriam to Gabriel Michael Mafi that it takes a child to inspire a village and he has inspired us to love and to live, to celebrate life. Thank you for sharing him with us.
Sorry, I just get emotional from what you just talked about. So first, I want to say my condolences to the, to Dr. Mafi and your husband. I would not, I was not able to go to the funeral, but I did go to the virtual and you could see the love and the care that the community have for you and for your son. Look at the picture, see how happy he is. He had a great lives. So get to other item, I have a couple of items I want to bring up. So first, I want to say thank to Chamber of Commerce for the Women Division Luncheon. That was the first time I were invited to be the guest speaker as an elected officer to say about my Navy career, well, my Navy time and my entire career path. So it was just some kind of nice to get the reflect, but it was, I appreciate to get invited and get to meet with the, the businesses and just share with them my experience. So thank you. Second, I have attended many, probably hundreds of community events throughout the year, but this one I want to bring up, relate to the community and quality of life. So I, that's the day after the Women Division Luncheon, I attend a ribbon-cutting for a Vietnamese cultural center at the corner of Nutwood and Garden Grove. It was nice to see that they have a location for multiple nonprofit group, especially youth and, you know, younger generation to have a place to come and do thing related to the culture. So it was nice to see that, so congratulations to the organization. Every time we have the council meeting, we have people come and talk about issue or problem in life that they want the council to get attention and the topic that we see all the time, the homeless one. So earlier, one of the resident mentioned about the, the tour that I had with the officer. So I just want to say thank to Officer Hector Ferreira, Jake Neely and Jesse Luca Terus for giving me that tour. So first, please don't go there by yourself. Don't go down to the flood channel because it's a dangerous place. And earlier, the, the resident were talking about like calling and people do not come. You know that when you go down there, there's no signal. So even the police, they don't want to go down there because if anything happen, no one will be able to come and help you, even the police. So I just want to make sure I bring that up. Please don't go down there. So we had the tour and we were able to go, most of the area was in District Three. Of course, we, the previous or two council meeting ago, there were a couple of the resident came here and talked about the area again, the freeway with a lot of trash. So we went there, we saw they, you know, they do the cleaning up, but we also checked the vacant building on the, at the corner of Gilbert and Chapman. The nice thing is that, well, that area, we got caught a lot from the business around there and I went a couple of times, but the nice thing to see is that because of the work from our staff, the code enforcement and the police, we were able to talk to the, the landowner so that they were able to block the building so nobody come in and out. That's in one of the, I'm not sure if you understand the feeling that I have, but I went a couple of times. I know that people come in and out and it's very dangerous because the people live next door, they don't know what happened and you just see stranger, you know, try to use your water outside, et cetera. So it was in a way a good sign to see that actually the building was closed off and there were no sign of homeless. We actually went around to the social security building too, cause that's where they hang out a lot because of, you know, the check and the, the money that they get, but so just I just want to say that with the council member here really quick. And then the other issue is the cat issue. So I got a couple email and phone call from the neighbor related to the cat issue, but I just want to pass information to resident that we are looking into it. I pass it to the staff and the staff will take care of that by reaching out to the resident and take action as needed. Next item is relate to the item that coming up. So if you, any of the student that gonna graduate soon, please make sure you check out our Garden Grove City website. Our city always have a very nice ceremony for student that graduate from college. I attend the last two year, very nice, you know, you, businesses donate gift and many thing that to celebrate you, so please make sure to go to our website, sign up early. I start every year, we always have people like sign up very last minute, so please do that early, but if you know that you're gonna graduate soon. Another event coming up for April is the, the Easter egg hunting, so make sure to check our website to get more information about that. And I want to say thank to all, all council member for voting yes on the criteria request. I have been part of that board of director for many year, not right now, but for the last couple of year, my student come and we perform drum and different things. So if any council member here want to So if any council member here want to come and see the performance, please let me know. I would love to take you there and or even practice with the kid if you want to. And last but not least, I just want to say happy birthday to Sarah, my daughter. Her birthday was last week. That's it.
First of all, I would like to give my condolences to Dr. Mafi family for your son Gabriel Michael Mafi. It's a, it's a great loss and my heart and prayer is with your family. Second, I also want to thanks Mayor Clough Enstone and our council for adopting the proclamation recognizing Black April Memorial Month. Thank you. For the event, for the last two weeks, I did have a chance to join with our city manager, Lisa Kim, HR Director Jenny Lee and city manager, Usula Reynosa. We have coffee with the our Garden Grove Police Department. It was fun. We have a chance to talk to them more than ever. We were there talking to them and they actually pretty nice more than I thought. So that that was great. I like to have that event more so we understand each other more. We we want to have more interface with our police department so we understand and work with them better. The next event that I would like to tell is I really enjoyed the council retreat. My compliment to consultant Lisa and our staff, city staff for organizing such a beautiful council retreat. I learned a lot. I learned a lot that day. So for that six hour, right, not eight hour, six hour, I learned a lot, many things that it would present that I didn't know before. So to me, it's it's a great learning, so looking forward for more. The the third thing that I would like to talk about is actually, thank, thank you for Councilman Yesenia recommend me to go and visit our Health Agent Center from Asia, Acacia Street, Garden Grove. I have a chance talking to the staff and the senior there. It's great because they happy. I'm so happy because I see them happy, you know? Most senior that I I went to a lot of different conversation and senior center and most of them are not happy, but our agent, Health Agent Center, people there are happy. Yeah, the the staff is great. They treat them well and and I have a chance to see the transportation that we helped them from from where they were, come, you know, come and go. So and everybody treat them very nice and they deserve it. The third thing is actually I did went to, surprisingly, West Garden Grove Neighborhood Watch at the Dittmore Street and joined with me was a Garden Grove PD liaison. We were there talking to the resident. Again, we take in a lot of question and we also resolved some question for them while we there and we need to have more question to bring home, which is good because we learn from it and the resident there was very nice. The last thing I want to talk about is the walk and talk. I I really have a lot of fun, have a walk and talk with, thanks to Chief Police Alfara and then city manager and and our garden goal management staff was there with me. We did, and we did have a chance to walk with a couple residents, not a lot, it's too early for them. And then we did take a round and have a talk and observe and see things around and my D too, which I I think is fun, good exercise for me too. So thank you so much for our staff. Thank you so much for going with me that day. That's it for me today. Thank you.
Yeah, I I'd like to start off, you know, with heartfelt condolences to the Mafi family for the loss of Gabriel. Heart, heart really goes out to you. I'd like to thank, also congratulations for Christie Lee, Woman of Distinction. I've known Christie for many years. We served on the Planning Commission together years ago before she was hired by the city and congratulations on that. And again, April 19th excavation, it's a big egg event. Maybe I should challenge you guys to see who can get the most eggs. Dive in and see who gets them. You you think you got it? All right, well. So yeah, you can go onto the city website. It's a wonderful event for the kids. You know, it it seems like every year after the event, I get emails and social media inquiry, well, how come no one ever told me about this? How come I, you know? So we're telling you, we're telling you right now, it's coming up. So get on the line and reserve your spot and and it does sell out, so you need to do that. And that's all for me.
Thank you very much, council colleagues. City Manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the city council. I too want to extend my condolences to Dr. Mafi and her husband Eugene. I had the opportunity to attend their candlelight vigil that was organized by the parents who love Dr. Mafi so much and it was so beautiful and I also had the opportunity to attend his funeral and just sharing the stories of their beautiful young boy. Very touching and my heart goes out to you, so thank you.
Thank you. City Attorney Samuel Sandoval.
Yes, Mayor, we did have a closed session earlier this evening and there's no reportable action out of that closed session. Thank you.
Thank you. Again, it's an honor to adjourn the meeting this evening in the beautiful memory of Gabriel Mafi. Meeting adjourned.